Good evening. This is the September 25 meeting of the East Long Meadow Town Council. We'll open the meeting now with a pledge of allegiance followed by a moment of silence. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We ask that you keep in your thoughts our servicemen and women around the globe as well as our first responders. In accordance with Massachusetts general law, we're required to say that this meeting is being taped and ask if there is anyone else in the audience taping this meeting or recording it for any purpose, so identify. Seeing none, Mr. Florence, do we have anything under public comment tonight?
No.
Okay, number four on our agenda, moving very quickly here. Council comments, any comments from the council this evening? Hearing none, moving right along to the town manager report. You're up on deck very quickly here tonight.
Yes, I am. So my first comment is that it's official. East Long Meadow's been named the 2019 best town slash city to live in for the second year in a row. I'm sure we'll get some kind of official notice, but I didn't hesitate to let everybody know now because some of you were in an official picture, correct?
Yes.
So they, yeah. So if they're taking official pictures, I guess I'm comfortable saying. I have not received a letter though from Republican yet.
I believe there was an insert in this past Sunday's, Sunday Republican-
Oh, really?
Above the various categories and readers' raves and some background.
Okay, excellent. Our phones are going off because we're receiving notice that something about the Maple Street, October, whoops, October 1, Maple Street will be closed through traffic from Westwood Avenue to Dwight until Friday, October 5. So that's hot off the press. My phone's gone off twice now with that. So I'm sure some of yours are as well.
Buzzing away.
Grant-funded items, representatives from East Long Meadow and Long Meadow, PVPC and the state met last week regarding a grant-funded study on the possibility of East Long Meadow and Long Meadow sharing public health services. Although very preliminary, it looks to be a promising possibility. Pioneer Valley Planning, I think it was UTOM that asked if they actually do the administration, and I confirmed that. He confirmed the PVPC handles the administration and procurement for all the grant-funded projects that they're involved in. He expects the projects will go out to bid this winter with projects starting in the spring of 2019 and concluding in the summer of 2019, although I just received the contract for their engagement in the procurement and the administration. And it says to be completed by October 2019. It could be extended if needed. Formal performance hearing will be held at a council meeting upon substantial completion of the projects. So it'll give you all an update of exactly how things are going and expected to complete. And I attached a budget sheet. It's just a quick budget sheet, but I thought it would give you an idea of what the projects are with a teeny bit of, you know, a little description. At the time of writing this, I was waiting to hear from Senator Lesser's office regarding the grant for the police station. I spoke with Michael Clark, the legislative aide for Senator Lesser yesterday, and he said that they are writing letters to the governor for advocating for the bonding of that money. So it's in process. We will be doing a letter as well. And he said that Senator Lesser will be very active in advocating for it. Cotton Brothers, our town planners, analyzed the information she received from a survey she began in August. I know, Don, that you're interested in seeing that. I can give you all a sneak peek in my office if you want, but you know, the courtesy is for her to present it to the planning board first, and then it will come to us. They may have some comments or some changes that they want her to make to the formatting. She can't change the numbers.
Excuse me, through the chair, is the planning board meeting tonight? I know they had a canceled meeting before.
Right.
They are.
So they are meeting tonight.
Is it on the agenda tonight then? Maybe to talk to them.
I don't know.
Okay.
I didn't check that, sorry.
That's all right.
The auditors have gathered the onsite information. They need to begin the 2017-18 audit. It is pretty early for them to be done already. They said we are one of the easier towns because we have things pretty much in order. 750 pounds of produce were donated to the COA by the town's community gardens. Guess there is a gentleman there that plants a lot just for the community gardens, and that's a very generous thing for him to be doing. As a follow-up to my brief mention at the council's last meeting, Bruce Finney and I met with Rick Green, a member of the Hamden Planning Board regarding Hamden's future sewer and water needs. Mr. Green explained that the discussion is very preliminary and will help the Hamden Planning Board as they look at their master plan. Bruce and I made ourselves available to Hamden, to the planning board if they need us for any additional. It was more things like, did you think about doing this? And if we were ever to have some kind of extension of ours, keep in mind you would need to do these pieces. So it's very preliminary. They're talking about possibly Wilbraham. I know Bruce mentioned something about, did you ever think about going directly from Springfield? It's like, oh, you know, we should think about that. So it really is, as we're doing our master plan, we're soured and have water throughout most of the community, but they have a whole different master plan that they need to put together. We've heard nothing further regarding our dispatch proposal to Hamden. I did see, it was 7:30 last night when I saw, I looked on Facebook and I have subscribed to Hamden's Facebook, and I saw that it was on last night's Board of Selectmen's agenda, but I don't know the outcome yet. So as soon as I hear something, I'll let y'all know. For those who have not been on Elm Street in the last few days, the sidewalk project's begun, and it's expected to be completed in about four weeks. It's a pretty hefty sidewalk project. Although it's hard to believe, the 2020 budget process has begun. I've attached a copy of the memo sent to all department heads asking for their capital project requests, and that's on the backside there. So we're being a little aggressive for a couple of different reasons, because our accountant won't be here for a couple months, and also it was the council's directive that it needs to be done much sooner. So we're in the process of doing that. I was unable to attend, but have heard the first meeting of the volunteers that will help plan, find funding, and implement the 125th celebration was very well attended. Lots of ideas, lots of volunteers. I'm not surprised. I find the community spirit and pride in East Long Meadow to be exceptional. I will keep you informed as ideas become plans. Lastly, last Wednesday, I had the pleasure of attending East Long Meadow's Lions Club meeting. A couple of things of interest that were discussed included their annual Christmas tree lighting will be bigger and brighter than ever as they are replacing the current lights with new LED lights and a new, I think they said, three-foot star at the top of the tree. Does that make sense? A three-foot star? Sounds pretty big, but it's a pretty big tree.
Yeah.
To help fund the new lights, they're considering a holiday ornament contest. They're still working out the details, but it sounds very interesting. Now, when you think of a holiday ornament, when they said that, I thought, oh, how cute it'd be.
They have to be big.
These gigantic ornaments that they want to put around town, like in front of, like in the town hall windows and that kind of stuff. And of course, Marge, my assistant, is the, well, we could cut it out and we could do this. I'm like, let's put some glue on it and some glitter, it'd be nice. So I'm sure you'll get every level of sophistication in ornaments.
While you're on that subject, some of these items, ironically, we are talking about them in the 125. We're discussing ornaments. We're discussing the fishing derby and stuff like that. So perhaps your contacts over there may want to have those people talk to our people.
Actually, some of them were at your meeting. That's where, so the fishing derby, the person that wants to revive that had already spoken to the Lions person, and I think her name is Donna Martinez-
Yes.
-from the Lions-
Yeah.
Was aware, she's the one that came to me with the gigantic ornament about a month ago to see if the idea was even a viable one. So she presented that to the Lions last Wednesday, but it was something that was already, I'm sure she's probably the one that presented it.
Just don't let them take our cookbook idea. That's ours.
So there were lots of great ideas, huh, there? So for your calendar, Camp Alex Day at the library, the bench has already been put in place. That will be Saturday, September 29. October 5 is Detective Barone's retirement party. I think you've all gotten that information. October 7 is the Military Family Appreciation Day. The 10th is the Flu Clinic. It's 9 to 6, but not only in Town Hall Parking Lot. In the morning, I think it will be at the schools. They're doing some mobile stuff, and maybe Amy can fill you in on that when she's up talking later. And October 12 is the Veterans Memorial Committee Spaghetti Supper. So I encourage you all to attend any of that stuff. It's all fun. That's all that happened.
Any other questions for the manager? Okay, moving on to approval of minutes. The minutes for our September 11 meeting are not currently ready, so we will set that matter aside until our next meeting. Number seven, under Communications, Correspondence, and Announcements, letter A, General Bylaws Ad Hoc Committee Report.
Actually, we had a meeting yesterday, which I could not, I'm sorry, today, which I could not attend. Time flies. Because I had a client in the office, so if someone, I got the gist of it, but if Tom or whoever was there would like to fill the people in on what happened.
Well, we had a great presentation. Suzanne from General Code did an excellent job answering questions and presenting the material. She left behind a lot of material that's very informational in nature. She answered a lot of difficult questions that we had regarding how this would all piece together. And I think we're all comfortable with suggesting that we move forward with the purchase, first purchase of $982 commitment to get this thing moving. Of course, when the funds are available.
So if you all are-
We can make a motion now, but wouldn't it be contingent upon, my understanding from listening to Suzanne this morning was that she was going to send you a calendar with-
Right.
... payment dates or start and milestone dates. I think that's what she called it.
Well, it's the milestone dates, and the first, I'm very comfortable with the $982 because certainly that's not a big amount anyway for a budget to possibly just absorb itself. But it's going to be a span of time from then to their first step, because they've got a lot of, to get that index together that they talked about, that's going to take them a little while.
Right.
They have to analyze the whole thing.
And that's going to cross over fiscal years because it's a multi-year project.
Right. So that's my thought, is it can be, it can be something that's planned in next year's budget more than having to impact this one much at all.
And part of the process, what she indicated in her payment plan was we could authorize them to go ahead and get started, and they're not looking for any money for 30 days.
Right, yeah.
It was the first payment, which is nice.
Yeah.
So we can make a motion to move it forward, and hopefully by then, the funds are available.
Yeah, I think if you say that you're in agreement to move forward with the whole General Code project, then we'll handle the money when it comes on board.
Because there will be a second payment due in December of 20%.
Possibly December, but I'm thinking, yeah.
She said 80 days out, so it'll probably be close to February.
Yeah, I'm thinking-
Okay, I'm just going by what they say.
Correct, yes, but she did say today that she would use October 1 as a general kickoff date.
And then it's 80 days from that, and that it could be a bit longer even.
Okay.
So we're not in a huge, we all want this done, but it's not going to be on the 81st day that we're saying, so where's the index?
Right, and that was made clear that it's a collegial relationship between the client, the town, and the company, and dates can get some wiggle room if necessary.
Yeah, because there will be a big, a big piece of the project will be, once they get us the index, we need to approve that.
Then we have to do some diligence on this end.
You all have to approve that. But then the next piece is the biggest chunk, which is having analyzed all of the changes that are made, and you all need to decide whether you want them or not on their recommendation. It has to go to the town attorney as well. So that's going to be a big chunk of time.
So can I entertain a motion from one of the committee members just to authorize the council going forward with the project?
I'd like to propose a motion to get the approval for an initial payment of $982 to, I believe, General Code to begin the process of our codification service.
I'll second that.
Motion's been made and seconded. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. So Tom and Denise, you can alert Suzanne that we're ready to engage in the relationship.
Ready to roll.
We're on a roll. Thank you. Under fine, I'm sorry, I'm jumping down too far here. Orders of the day, licensing matters, the reversal of a liquor license for Tao's Asian Cuisine. Mr. Florence?
Yeah, I'd like to speak to this. This is almost like a prelude to our next meeting. According to due reversal, we have to have a public hearing, and I did talk to the ADCC, and it said the steps you have to take is to obtain a letter from both parties acknowledging the reversal transfer in ownership. And if you want to step up there? Attorney Levine did a great job getting that memo together. Both parties did sign it, so we have that step taken care of. The next step would be to hold a public hearing with the council, and you as the local license authority must vote on the reversal or transfer. And then we have a form to present to the APCC after you have it approved, and then it does transfer back to the prior owner. So again, it's just more or less letting you guys know what's going to happen at your next meeting on October 9.
Great, thank you.
So for the public to know what the causes of this, there originally was going to be a transfer, a sale of-
Of ownership.
Yeah, and the change of ownership did not take place, but the liquor license had already been approved.
Correct.
So now we need to undo that piece of the process.
Right, to restore the license rights to the owners of Tao's.
Yeah.
Okay, under Financial Matters, discussion of the five-year capital plan. Sarah, are you, is this, are you prepared to start that discussion tonight?
We are. We all have presented it to you all and are here to answer any questions you might have.
Okay, through the chair, may I?
I, yes, but I was going to start, jumpstart the conversation. We are in receipt of your work on the five-year plan. I also see attach to your report, the memo that went to all our department heads asking for their capital plan requests for this next FYI 20 fiscal year. So that said, if we're to expect some response from department heads, can you explain for everyone where that fits into the document that you've already presented us? Is that going to supplant some of their previous requests?
So if you look on the column all the way to the right, there are some items that, let's see, one on the first page, but there are some items that were requested, on the third page, there's one, it says requested for FYI but not funded. So for various reasons, they were not funded. And you all were part of the process of paring down the number of capital projects. So any of those that were new for the first year, they would not be going any further unless they again request them this year, and that's reflected in the memo that we sent. The updating of the five-year plan going forward, you would not see 18 from this point on. That was to make up for not having it earlier to you all. But the five-year plan, so this is really a six-year plan, the five-year plan from 19 to 23 will be in place until the budget is passed next year. Then we would drop off the 19 and add 20 and move forward. So it will be discussion with department heads as to what they see for their five-year plan. We did not ask for it, and that was my prerogative. My thought was, we're doing this early for them. They don't need to be thinking about the five-year plan, although some of them will, but some, they don't need to worry about that until, let's work on your capital for now. And then as we get to the point where we're going to be discussing their requests with them, we'll be asking them, and I've already told them, we'll be asking you for your five-year plan projection because it does integrate into the first year. So some will say, you know, I know I probably won't get it this year, but I want to put it out there so that next year maybe I'll be able to get it. So then it would go to their second-year plan, if that's their plan.
But essentially, what they're supplying to us now will not impact this document. This document-
No, this is a frozen document.
Is frozen, and it's just that we might make some adjustments just in the format of it for what will be formally our five-year plan that's currently active.
Yeah.
So what we see in the 2020 column is frozen, is that what you're saying?
No.
No?
No, the-
2019.
Oh, the 2019, I understand that, yes.
So this is no longer a fluid document. This is the plan for this year.
Which we will update after we get their new information for the next year. This is what we would then therefore have for the public if they were to request a five-year plan once we finalize it.
Tom, you got some?
Yeah, I'll start out with tailing on to that discussion with regards to removals and additions to the plan. I'd like to see those identified in some manner with a note saying why they came off.
For future ones?
What we've always done is, well, someone could put it on the plan and then take it off, and we don't know what's come on and what's come off. Through no fault of this process, we've received three documents, and it's been confusing to try to follow along because they have not been numbered, and we don't know what's been added and deleted from the previous additions. They have not been dated.
They are dated.
Well, down the bottom when you print them.
I always date them.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
But we don't know when the changes have come on and what's been deleted. So it'd be nice to have that as a storyline so we can follow along and understand instead of trying to follow every column.
Okay, we'll have to think about how we address that.
Yeah.
I was trying to think about it right now, and I can't.
Yeah, it's one of the things that just jumped out at me, that we try to match columns, and the columns keep changing.
So you're saying, for instance, something like the dump truck that something happened, we had a Public Works truck. It would have been, let's, just as an example, in year 2021-
Hit.
-we were expecting to do it, then it got hit, and we replaced it with-
Special emergency.
Right, emergency funding.
Maybe something in this column, in this end column of notes that says, no longer necessary because, but then we'd be taking it out of the plan.
Yeah, you don't have a figure there.
Yeah.
So we should be concerned with what's on the five-year plan as we address it when it's finished.
Because it-
I mean, I'm not concerned with what's been taken off because that's got nothing to do with what we're dealing with. That's just my personal opinion.
And I've said all along, it is going to be a fluid plan because what you think you're going to do in three years, and what you do in three years, you could have a hurricane that blows off, you know, a roof that you plan to do.
Careful.
Yeah, bad example.
Or, for example, we had the Recreation Department, and it was a new director who
has different goals.
Yeah.
And so then some of those goals impacted the capital plan. So that kind of thing, you know, does happen.
Yeah, and it'd be good to keep track of that total as we move along.
So would it be helpful, like having, I want to say, a supplemental, like memo as to this item was removed due to this reason, this item changed from this year to this year, just on a supplemental rather than make that spreadsheet more complicated? Would that be better?
Identify.
Well, you can't put it on the spreadsheet because you don't want to deal with it.
Exactly.
And it's not, yeah.
So that would make sense then?
Yeah.
So we'll do that going forward.
Some logical tracking.
Some history, some trails, some water.
Sure.
No problem.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
In addition, a question regarding bonding. An initial process that we authorized, we were only bonding three items in our initial capital planning projects, and those three items were replacement of doors, modular classrooms, and replacing steam. And I noticed in the new spreadsheets that we're bonding enterprise fund, sewer fund projects.
That was part of it.
Why? No, that was not part of the process. I've got the document here, and it does not show that.
That was part of the presentation when we talked about those enterprise funds.
It was.
We've never spent enterprise fund money, especially sewer money, out of the general fund.
It's not spent out of the general fund.
It's out of the enterprise fund.
How are you paying for the bond?
Out of the sewer.
Enterprise fund.
So you're going to pay for it out of sewer?
Yes, sir.
What about the school projects?
The school projects are out of general fund.
So you're going to split it?
Yes. Yes, and we have them-
Okay, you haven't identified that.
It says sewer bonded, right, on the-
It says bonded. It doesn't say sewer bonded.
If you look at the presentation that had been approved at the town council meeting on May 23, I believe it was, then it says sewer bonded right next to the sewer. So it has first general fund bonding, and it shows the school projects and the total amount of 5.5 million or so. Then it shows the sewer, and it shows their three projects, which add up to 385,000. And to the right of that, it says sewer bonded. Then it shows the water projects, and it shows that they will be just funded out of the water fund.
What's this document you had sent me then, that shows capital projects, sewer bonding for three projects only? So what did we go out to bond for?
We went out to bond for the windows and doors, the modular classrooms, the steam piping, the sewer-influent infiltration, the dump truck, the crane, the truck with the crane, and the water main for Maple Street, the water main for Maple Shade, the water main for Fern Glen, and I might have missed one more.
Where is that document? Because I've not seen that.
It's right here.
So the water main-
No, that's on your spreadsheet, but this is a visual process.
Yep, the water main for Fern Glen and Maple Shade was approved in May of 2016. The water main for Maple Street was approved in May of 2017, and it was specifically denoted to come out of the Water Enterprise Fund for that. The items that I just mentioned, the sewer, was denoted on the May 23, 2018, as well as all of those school projects were all denoted there. The windows and doors were originally approved for bonding in February of 2018, but then the other projects for the schools were approved, oh, it was the security doors, excuse me.
So this is prior to this year when those were approved.
Some, some of them, yes.
So that's why I'm not aware of them.
So what document are you looking at? I don't-
I'm looking at a document that was presented as part of the capital planning, showing 2019 capital planning programs. And in there, it has three projects for bonding, and the only three projects listed were replacement of doors and windows, modular classroom, and replace steam piping.
But there was-
And secondary to that, there was, we've never spent enterprise fund monies except on enterprise fund stuff.
Yes.
So what you're saying is we're going to take a dump truck and pay for it out of bonding.
It's a sewer truck.
Sewer water, right.
It's used for that. So half of it was, excuse me, the dump truck itself was 100% sewer. It is normally that. It's replacing that vehicle, which was disclosed. The crane is 25% sewer, 75% water. Water had enough in there. percent water. Water had enough in there, undesignated, and they retained areas to be able to pay for it fully, whereas sewer did not. So that's why we bonded the sewer.
Where was that approval to do that?
It was at the May twenty-third, two thousand eighteen town council meeting.
Can you show me a document that says?
We approved it.
And upon recommendation by the-
I don't have it here, Paul. I don't know if everybody else got different documents.
And another thing is, how old are the sewer and water enterprise funds? Two years?
Two years.
So in other words, as far as bonding things through there, we've never had the opportunity because they've never been around.
Correct.
That's something new, so.
But we credited those funds for a purpose, which is to fully support the enterprise funds of the water and sewer. And now what we're doing is, we're taking it out of the general taxation.
No, so we're not.
No, no, no.
No, we're not. We're using the enterprise funds to pay for the bonding, for their bonding.
The enterprise-
The enterprise fund, not the general fund.
But that wasn't identified here, so how would you know?
The enterprise fund is paying for all of the financing costs related to it. It's paying for the bond itself. It is making, it's making the debt payments, which, if you look at the sewer and water enterprise funds, if you look at the approved budget, there are lines for principal and interest. And there's also a line that says the interest on a short-term note, because we were anticipating it to be a short-term note, and we disclosed that we had that in there because we were anticipating bonding. That was all discussed prior to the town council approval. And then it does say on that page with the capital, it's the second part, second page of the capital, and it clearly says sewer bonded.
So this was in those subcommittee meetings?
No, it was in the general session, as well as in the subcommittee.
Can you send me those documents, please?
You can see them.
Since I appear not to have them.
They would have been, well-
What I have here is not consistent with what she's telling me.
But that might have been a preliminary presentation.
No, these are final documents, presented as part of the five-year capital plan.
This is the final document.
Water and sewer fund information.
Yeah. But in the initial documents you sent us, in the budget process, they were not on there. I could not find them, in my documentation.
Okay. If you want, we can send them to you, but they are also attached to the May twenty-third, two thousand eighteen-
That's what I looked for.
Minutes that are attached to the website.
But they're posted online?
So I'm asking for you to send it to me.
Yep. We can send it.
Any additional questions?
Other questions?
So your memo indicates that the department heads have till the tenth of October, I believe?
I think it is, and nobody's jumped out the window or anything yet. So I did talk to Bruce ahead of time, and Gordon, and told them, you know, I know that's an unrealistic timeline for them. They have such large, encompassing a lot of different areas. So they are going to be working on them, but that means that when Sarah comes back, we'll be able to hit the ground running. In the meantime, we'll be able to do some of the low-lying fruit early.
I think as it relates to the school department, some of the requests that are currently in the FY twenty column, specific to the high school, we're notably in a state of flux there. You know, do we go out and bond four, five, six million dollars when we're waiting for MSBA to determine whether or not the high school statement of interest will be invited into the eligibility round? And clearly Superintendent Smith cannot push the process any quicker than he's already advocating. My understanding of that is, that won't happen till November-ish?
So in November-
Late October, early November?
In November, we'll find out if we make it to the next round.
Correct.
So if we do, then the final notification would occur in probably January, February timeframe, which is before the town council votes. So we can make adjustments at that point. But yes, for the October tenth, it's going to be a best guess.
He's putting a rock in a hard place right now.
Well, this was more, certainly, and we've had that discussion with him, that we don't expect, we know, everybody knows about the MSBA kind of out there. I guess my other note to Gordon was to let him know that when we ask for priorities from the school board, that we need, we need what their priorities are, really, not sort of, well, yeah, we think they might be this and they might be that. Some of that does have to do with the MSBA. So they may have to readjust their priorities, but we need them to take a hard look at what their priorities would be.
Understood.
A little bit earlier. And he was on board for that.
Further discussion on the status of the capital plan at this point?
Maybe I missed it. If the planning board moves forward with a master plan, is that already in here, or is that going to be?
It's not in here yet.
Not here yet. Just curious what the cost is going to be.
So am I. I know that Connie is working on looking at how that will all get put together. We are talking about possibly looking at some grant opportunities for that. Possibly, I won't say which, you know, there are some possibilities there, but she's looking at that and needs to make sure that the priorities of the planning board are also addressed as to, it's a pretty big process. It could be, I know the last one that I was a part of was like a four-year process. There was a lot of interviewing and a lot of citizenry involvement that takes a long time to gather all that information so that you're sure you're reflecting the current needs of the community. So it might be a multi-phase. I would think it might be a, really a five-year plan.
Okay. All right, then, moving on to financial matters. B two, a discussion slash vote of updates to Mass General Law, Chapter forty-four, Section twenty, the proceeds from sales of bonds, restrictions on use, and disposition of premiums.
So in your-
Floor's yours still.
Thank you. In your packet, you have a copy of that section of Mass General Law. So on November seventh, two thousand sixteen, the modernization bill changed how you can create a premium for a bond. So in the past, whenever you received a premium on a bond, it would become just general fund revenue. With the Modernization Act, you can't do that anymore. You have two choices. Either, one, you can use that premium to reduce your current financing costs for that bond offering, or, two, you have to put it in a separate fund that then you use for later bonding. So what I'm here to ask you is to vote, I'd like to use the premium to offset our current financing rather than a possible future. By doing that, that saves us a lot of money, because then we're able to reduce the overall total of the bond, and therefore save on the debt service over the life of the bond.
Makes sense.
And so you also have a copy of the vote language, which our financial advisors did prepare for us to make sure that it meets all the legal requirements of that.
Other questions for Sarah?
To the chair?
Yes.
Who has the authority to spend or decide, make that decision? As you indicated, there's two choices.
The governing body is the one that needs to make the vote, and that's why I'm here before the town council to ask, since this will be our first one doing it, so the town council would be the one that would approve which way you can do that.
And you're asking us to?
I'm asking you to use the premium to offset the current bonding, rather than putting it in a separate fund for potential future funding.
Okay. So I make sure.
Yep.
I'd like to make a motion to accept the provisions of the Municipal Modernization Act for Massachusetts, General Laws, Chapter forty-four, Section twenty, relating to the proceeds from the sale of bonds, restrictions on use, and disposition of premiums.
So moved?
Seconded.
Motion's been made and seconded. Is there further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of this motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Motion carries.
Now, do we have to also do this order to allow you?
I believe so, yes. Thank you.
Let me do it.
Please, go right ahead.
Make a motion that each prior order of the town council that authorizes the borrowing of money, pay costs of capital projects, is hereby supplemented to provide that in accordance with Chapter forty-four, Section twenty of the General Laws, as most recently amended by the Municipal Modernization Act, so-called the premium received by the town upon the sale of any bonds or notes thereunder, lest any such premium apply to the payment of the cost of issuance of such bonds or notes, may be applied to pay project costs, and the amount authorized to be borrowed for each such project shall be reduced by the amount of any such premium so applied.
So moved?
Seconded.
Motion's been made and seconded. Discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And that carries as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Just so you know, we did do our bond offering. We received six bidders, which was an excellent turnout, and we received an overall two point seven nine percent interest rate on it, and we should get the bond funds by the end of the week. So we are very excited.
What was the total of the bond?
We had five point five million, I think, for general fund, three hundred and eighty-five for sewer, and I want to say it was just under a million for water.
That's a great rate.
It is.
Yes.
We'd like to get something like that.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you, Sarah.
Thank you, Sarah.
Rebound your house.
That's right. Moving on, we have nothing this evening under old business, new business, the Brownstone Gardens two, the termination of agreement. Mr. Carr?
Good evening. My name is Christopher Carr. I'm the property manager at Brownstone Gardens. And I'm here tonight pinch-hitting for Ray Miller, president of Brownstone, who would have been here, but he's traveling with his family, and so I'm a poor substitute. With me are Marilyn Richards, former president of Brownstone and a current board member, James Botterick, former president of Brownstone Gardens and current board member, and my son Christopher, one of our property managers. So we are here tonight for a very specific reason. Brownstone Gardens is in a phase where we are attempting to move forward and to address several of our longstanding issues. The first being aging in place. Our residents, many of whom moved in twenty years ago at seventy, are now approaching ninety, and aging in place is an issue we deal with all the time. As a result, we find the need for things such as elevators, fire sprinklers, and individual laundromats, things, and other ADA improvements just to make our residents' lives easier. This comes along with a new provision by the federal government to prepay some of our mortgage and move forward with a new lower-rate mortgage, where we can take the savings and use them to put, inject capital into the properties and breathe new life into those and aid our residents. Part of that long, gruesome, arduous task is the combination of the present Brownstone Gardens one and the present Brownstone Gardens two. Brownstone Gardens one's mortgage has been paid in full. Brownstone Gardens two, we are presently receiving approval to prepay. Those two developments are going to be sold, newly defined, five oh one C three, with the same board of directors, and then we are going to dissolve those two corporations in May. One of the issues here is to try to ease the government issue, governance issues. You know, we have three tax bills, we have three corporate setups, et cetera. So we're trying to also consolidate as much as possible. Brownstone Gardens three is separate and distinct and will not be part of this issue in that regard. The footprints of the building will be virtually the same, with the exception of a small addition for this elevator shaft, and in case, some cases, the elevator room off the elevator shaft. Virtually no new units are going to be built or anything like that. I was actually supposed to be at the planning board tonight, when Mr. Miller had to travel. I shifted here and we put, and I'm going to meet next month with the planning board. That said, what we're here specifically for is that Brownstone Gardens one originally had a one twenty-one A contract that ran concurrently with its mortgage. Brownstone Gardens two has a separate one twenty-one A contract. Now that we are selling those to a new five oh one C three, we have to terminate the Brownstone two one twenty-one A contract. We have done all the things, I don't know if you have a letter, a copy of a letter from the assessors, is that in your packages?
Yes.
I have copies available. We, Mr. Miller and I have met with the assessors, assessing department, and come to a mutually agreeable one. And we have, our lawyers have negotiated with the Department of Community Renewal about dissolving the present one twenty-one A agreement. But what is necessary is that a final vote of the town council be necessary for the state to move through with this. Just to give you a little background information, the Brownstone Gardens, this is Brownstone Gardens two only, in twenty seventeen, we paid a total between this payment to the state and the payment to the town, a total of twenty-seven thousand eight hundred and forty-one dollars in taxes. In twenty sixteen, it was twenty-seven thousand seven hundred and one dollars, twenty fifteen, twenty-seven thousand one hundred and thirty-five dollars. And if you look at Brownstone Gardens two's history since nineteen eighty-six, when it came on board, not including twenty eighteen, we'll have paid seven hundred and seven thousand eight hundred and fifty-three dollars to the town of East Long Meadow. That's Brownstone two. Brownstone one has paid about two point five million dollars in addition to that, and Brownstone three has paid about seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars in addition to that. So this has been a very mutual beneficial relationship, but we would love to have you terminate that contract so that we can move forward with our plans to aid our existing residents.
Thank you. Any questions from the council?
I just have a couple. I just want to understand, from the town's point of view, I understand it's beneficial to you because you want to refinance and move forward. So that I'm clear, what's the impact to the town? Will it impact in the future our amount of affordable housing? Will it affect every, just so, I just need to be educated.
Two questions. First of all, monetarily wise, you will do better. That's the bottom line. Perhaps, perhaps not this first year, there's some hiatus type of thing, but ultimately you will do better financially. That's number one. Number two, as far as affordability, we are, I can explain this better, currently, we initially attempted to do all affordable housing when this was done. The state, mass housing finance at the time, always encouraged us to have some market-rate housing, and the board was fine with that. However, when the state got into some financial issues, they lowered the amount of subsidy we were taking, and they tried to force us to take more and more market-rate residents. Currently, right now, in phase one, which is a hundred units, we have twenty-three market-rate residents. As part of the overall financing, I should say this that I didn't, I failed to mention before, by paying off our mortgage, which was at the end of its amortization, we also lost what's known as the thirteen A subsidy. Now we have, we do, we have to continue affordable housing without subsidy, and so that's one of the things. So one of the things we're doing is, we are going to raise that number of market-rate units to thirty-three. That's not set in stone yet. We don't, we hope to be able to get that high. We know we'll be at least twenty-five, but the new market rate will be somewhere to twenty-five to thirty-three, and that's to help to make up for the loss of subsidy. Lastly, the entire twenty-eight-acre parcel that Brownstone owns, including Brownstone one, two, and three, presently has a hundred and seventy-two units on it. There are no additional units planned right now, but in the long-term planning, we are looking to add one more building. We could, you know, it could be possible to use twenty-eight units. We'll probably never get there. The next building that's planned is somewhere between eight and eighteen units, and that would be market-rate housing. The federal government is running out of subsidy and discontinued. The program that Brownstone two and Brownstone three was built under has been discontinued. It's technically on the books, but they don't appropriate any money for it now. We're hopeful that someday that money will come back, but the long-term planning is that we hope to add twelve to eighteen units after we get this, after we get this scenario done right here. So hopefully someday we'll be at a hundred and ninety units or something like that on that parcel. But beyond that, there's been no long-term plans. That's where we are right now.
The reason I'm asking is, you know, we're cognitive of our, of the amount of affordable housing we have here in East Long Meadow. That's a big issue, and we have a- That's a big issue, and we have a project potentially in the, that might be coming back. She's smiling. Where by its own admission, it's going to be creating not only market rate, but market rate plus concierge living. So what we're trying to understand is trying to find strategies of trying to keep ourselves as, you know, as close to that 10%, not to eviscerate it. So what can we do collaboratively? And I'll be asking the same question very soon, to try to keep the town of East Long Meadow with affordable housing.
I have some excellent news for you.
I'm waiting.
If we're allowed to construct, say, 18 units, for lack of a better term, of market rate housing, and it is owned by a, the nonprofit that would be majority affordable, i.e. the other 100 and so, if it's the same owner, those market rate units technically count towards your 40B number. Is that good?
So you're bringing us in the right direction with this project? Even if you're expanding.
I thought you were taking away 10.
That's kind of, that was kind of where I was, I was glad you brought that up. I'm thinking you were going, moving the bar the other way.
We're not. We're in the affordable housing business. I mean, we'd love, but quite frankly, part of the issue was that by being solely affordable and with very few other limited rental options in East Long Meadow, we were hurting people that had lived in East Long Meadow for 25, 30, 40 years, that, that had some means and wanted to stay there, were being forced to move out. And so this, this is a measure by the board to directly address that concern.
And you have a big waiting list to get in there.
We do have a big, we have a big waitlist.
So even if you build the project that you're planning on building, it won't, it won't satisfy the waiting list.
Right. That's on the affordable side. We do, you know, we're just, we're just getting into the market rate business, so we don't have a long waiting list on the market side. On the affordable side, we have a long, that's not a problem. It never will be a problem.
Okay.
But Brownstone Gardens is an active, good corporate citizen of East Long Meadow. As you can see, the board members are all tied to the town, and as a result, their interests in the board meeting are always, how does this affect East Long Meadow?
Good, thank you. Mr. Carr?
Just one question, is that building that you're talking about possibly building identified on the plan?
Yeah, I'd be happy to show it to you.
I believe it's identified in the lower left corner.
This is Brownstone Gardens 1 right here. Brownstone Gardens 2 are the two units that sit up on the hill. Brownstone Gardens 3 is the one across the water next to the police station. What we would do is, we're actually, the elevator in G Building would be actually added on to the end of the building in anticipation, and it'll be a three-stop elevator instead of a two-stop elevator, so that when this building would be added on right there.
Shared?
Share that elevator.
Where's the fire station?
Fire station is, fire station is.
On the same side of the street?
Well, it's on the same, on Summer's Road.
It's in the front of the building.
Yeah. That's the thing. Our goal is to refinance these, get the construction of the elevators and the fire sprinklers done, and then we'd go and address the new building.
Is there any room for further expansion on that particular property after that building is done? Maybe up near 3?
There, yes and no. It would have to be very seriously looked at.
Okay.
There are wetlands issues and access issues. And the zoning, East Long Meadow is fairly restrictive zoning, so there's, without.
It's fair to say it's possible.
It is technically possible. It is zoned for 200, we're at 172, so under current zoning, you could probably get another, you could technically get another 28. I really don't see it, it could be, but I don't see it getting that much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Further questions? Then I'll entertain a motion.
Okay. Motion to terminate the agreement between the town of East Long Meadow, Brownstone Gardens 2, and the Department of Housing and Community Development.
So moved?
Motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Thank you very much, I hope I wasn't too long.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to item D2 under new business, the update of the health department's intern program, as well as an update on our trash and recycling. And we have members from our health department with us this evening.
I love talking trash.
Mr. Bennett, she likes to talk trash. Welcome.
So before we get into the full update, we were just going to introduce you to Beckett. We were here in the spring and discussed the internship that we were going to be having, so we thought Liz was going to give you a little update on his work this summer.
So right when school ended, Beckett came and we drove around the streets almost every week, and he had a great insight with what the town's really like. He knew the drivers, he knew the routes, he knew the trash cans, the trash sizes. He was a huge help this summer. We also did a couple field trips. We went to Republic, our trash hauler's headquarters, and we picked up some recycling bins and also talked with drivers there and how the business works. He also was very helpful in creating a welcome packet that I'll talk about later. And he's been a tremendous help this summer and a great asset to our health department. And we wanted to thank him.
So Beckett, the council has a proclamation for you this evening. Be hereby known to all that the town of East Long Meadow offers its sincere appreciation to Beckett Vigno for his hard work and dedication as an intern with the East Long Meadows Health Department and Recycling Program dated the 25th of September 2018. Congratulations. Great job. Nice to see emerging leaders in the community.
Okay, so the last, when we came to talk about the budget, back, was that marked at this point now already? There were some questions asked about why our trash tonnage and costs continue to rise. So part of the reason we developed this internship and started to look into it was through those inquiries. We've had significant service issues with our hauler this winter. I think most residents in town will tell you that they, at one point or another, had missed trash pickups. So Liz is going to update you on some of the things that she has observed over the last couple months.
Thank you for having me. As I said, before Beckett came, I didn't really have the opportunity, being a part-time employee, to drive around as much as I did this summer. And I noted that a lot of people have excess trash, and they're also not recycling correctly. And so one of your handouts that we have, your handout 1 is some data. So during the summer, I drove around every week looking, looking at streets and houses, and we did a collection of 60 houses, I think that's, if I'm right, 60 houses, and noted the size, noted the size of the barrels that were on the streets. And I also wanted you to note at table 1 that our trash tonnage has gone up, and with our contract, of course, the price per tonne has also gone up, so this year it's $75 a tonne.
So that first, that first table speaks to what Joe had asked during the budget season. Is why, why is our cost going up? Is it that our tonnage is going up, are we getting more houses, is our recycling going down? Where are these numbers coming from? So this is just a reporting of kind of the trend that our community has had with their trash disposal as well as recycling. And as Liz just said, in addition to the tonnage going up each year for our contract, the cost to dispose of those tonnage goes up as well. So it's kind of doubled, two issues happening at once there.
So then, below that is the, a graph of 60 houses that I observed on a Thursday route with the size of the barrels.
So as you can see, we have, for our trash regulations in town, we have a limit of 35 gallons. That was set forth back, we have records back to 2010. It was by the board's selectmen at that point that limited it to 35 gallons. So it's, it's been in place. And of those 60 houses, which Republic has let us know is a very average collection. It's not any standout in either direction. We saw, we only had nine of the barrels that met our trash limits. So, and as we brought out on the table below, that kind of the weight that goes along with that, so we can extrapolate it into our tonnage. So we can see at 35 gallons, we can expect it to weigh 50, 50 pounds. And as you go up, those tonnage dramatically increase. So what we did on table 2 is just kind of extrapolate that difference for you to show that just those little pieces of data on 60 houses in town show a difference of about $3,000 a year. Now, if we extrapolate that to the rest of our residents, we could be looking at a significant cost savings just by following the regulations that are already in place. It means changing nothing on the books other than enforcement. So what we're here with, for you guys tonight, is that's the background final. And now we're here to explain kind of our next steps as a department and how we're going to address this. So some of our next steps that Liz and Beckett started was education to our residents. So Liz and Republic has been working together to educate the residents at the barrel, right? So that's kind of the first, the first point of contact. When we go and we see that it's a barrel that's too large, or too much trash, or there's recycling in the trash, we have a leave behind notice that gets left right there. Now, because there are so many out of compliance, Republic is having a lot of hard time keeping up, so Liz, on her time, is going through and helping them with those. We have, I'm not sure if you guys have had feedback, but we've had feedback at our department, you know, why, why now? Why is this happening? We've worked with our residents to explain to them that the rationale behind this is, this is what we're, Republic is holding us accountable for. So we've had all these delays this winter, and part of that is the DOT hours. Well, if it takes them longer to fill the truck because they're lifting heavier trash or more trash, then they have to go to transfer it sooner because there's more trash in the truck, then they don't have enough time to actually come back and get all the trash. So if we're holding them accountable, and we've sent them letters explaining that we were going to start fining them due to the inconveniences that they're having for our residents. If we're going to start fining them because of these, then our residents also need to be able to provide what we've asked them to provide and what will allow Republic to be successful. So one of the things, in addition to the education at the barrel, we've been doing social media, Facebook, website, and Twitter. We've been putting it out very often, so people are seeing it in multiple places. Liz did some Elcat videos.
Yep.
Where she went and she, it's running on our local Elcat. We had an ad in the reminder that helped residents understand the different size barrels. We reached out to Rockies in town to let them know that people are going to be looking for these 35-gallon barrels because now we're holding accountable. So they know that the demand is going to be there, so the supply will meet what people are looking for. Also, so they can see a representation of the difference in size. And so if they have 100 gallon, what does it actually look like to have a 35-gallon trash barrel? You know, it's, it's.
If you look at the pictures that are also attached to your packet, this one is 100-gallon barrel.
So they are, they are quite large. And then, so the, the last piece of education that we're doing and probably the most outreach is we're using some of our grant funds this year to send out a large educational flyer. You guys have that one. Where Liz has been diligently working to explain the different pieces, what alternatives they have for recycling, composting, our transfer center. That way, it's, everyone is getting the same information, there should be no confusion. After this mailer goes out, so if you have any feedback on this mailer, this is not a done draft, feel free to let us know. After this mailer goes out, we will not be collecting trash that does not meet our town's standards. And so we do expect there to be.
Some pushback.
Pushback on that. So we wanted, before we make any movement like that, we wanted to come and make sure that, to talk to the council to get your feedback, so we can all make sure we're on the same page before we move something that large.
So the size of the flyer is much, maybe just to, it's a good-sized flyer, very colorful, and really very informative.
Right, it's like an accordion.
Yeah. I think that's what you need to sort of beat people over heavily, idea that they can't do this. It's a shame, I don't know, too bad we didn't have a package for like new homeowners with stuff.
That's all Liz is to do.
Including other things about the town, but also getting information.
Well, that does make sense.
Right.
Yeah, I was just saying, when the realtors, if they sell a house.
Don't give it at your closings.
I'd be happy to. Send them with the MLCs.
One thing that Beckett and I did work on is a welcome packet and having all this information. And we also started talking with the clerk's office about, or assessor's office about, you know, how to handle that and hand it out to residents, and taking pieces from all the other departments, what they need to know about the town.
Additional question?
Sure.
I understand what you're doing, and I think it's necessary from the information you've provided. The only concern that I have is leaving trash unattended on the roadside. There are many people who don't follow the regulations that are in place today.
Right.
If Republic does not pick it up and it stays, it will be destroyed either through vehicle traffic or through animals.
Right.
And then we're going to have a mess in our roadways. Is there a next step? Education is great. I think we need to educate, educate, inform, and then, if necessary, fall to fines and fees.
Well, we had about two months this winter where Friday pickup was not collected for about two months, and we didn't have any major issues like that. So at least from the history perspective, we didn't have any major catastrophes. People were not happy clearly because their trash was left behind, but it wasn't, you know, trash in the roadways that we were alerted to. But the town does have a public nuisance by law that we, if there's trash and it becomes a nuisance, then we, on my end of things, can go and take care of that on that end, which includes a variety of different enforcement mechanisms.
I think a big piece of the education has been that now we're starting to see more of the, or at least I am on my way around town, more of the green bags, which Republic was invisibly picking up, the bags that were not the green bags. That helps subsidize some of the cost, and at the same time, gives the residents a way to get rid of their trash. So I think we've had like three months, by the end of this, we'll have had three months of stickers and letters that have gone to the people. And actually, in some cases, face to face, you know, we need to help you here. There are things that are not going right.
We actually also have started selling the green bags in the office.
I was going to ask you.
That way, people have access to it, and if the resident, the stores run out, which what people are saying they run out, we will always have them at our office. We'll make sure to keep a stack. They're sold for the same exact dollar 75 that the stores are selling for, and they can.
Per bag.
Per bag. Yes, not for the roll. Another thing, just of note, is one of the things that Liz and Beckett discovered during their summer was businesses were being collected. Republic was either unaware, or at some point, somehow, these small businesses were collected on the municipal trash pickup. So I don't, we, we didn't cost analysis that out, but they all received letters, and they're all now aware that their trash services were not paid for by, by the town of East Long Meadow.
I think some of the, the education has also caused a lot more of the recycle bins to, they're flying out of our office, and they, they were not as much before.
And they're always free. Those are free, so the more you recycle, the less trash you have, the more likely you're going to meet that 35-gallon.
Prolific recyclers can actually be restrained by the 35-gallon limit. So if somebody happens to have, you know, a 40-gallon, they can use, they can put the green recycle sticker on it.
Right.
And use that. So that's not, there's no limitation on recycling.
Correct. And let me just give you some long-term goals of mine. I applied for a grant, which I should find out soon, for mattress recycling at the transfer station. And when we do have our contract coming up next time, we will think about all the things that have happened in the last year, and also some cost savings, maybe even putting the same-size barrels into the contract or something like that, so everyone has the same-size barrel. There's also a barrel grant I can apply for in the next cycle. So then that would perhaps give everybody the same, and we wouldn't have any issues.
We could provide them to everybody.
Liz, where are we in, in the contract? How many more years do we have?
We have until June 2020, so about a year.
Right around the corner.
Too, too bad then.
Right. Right.
I have a couple of questions through the chair, please.
In this photograph here?
Yep.
Can you identify, how, how large is this container? I mean, it's something less than thirty-five, but.
No, that's a fifty-gallon.
Really? Okay. It looks so much smaller.
I know. It's, it's kind of funny, when you drive by, it looks small, but when you actually get out and stand next to it, it's much larger. It's strange.
So I, I mentioned this because my neighborhood is full of these, and they're being picked up.
Right.
So in essence, they're, they're not supposed to be picked up because they're, the limit's thirty-five, right?
Right.
So if Republic is aware that once this mailer goes out, we're letting them know, do not collect these barrels. One of the things we can do as, as a department is, Liz can go around and see what barrels are above thirty-five, and then see if they've been collected. At that point, Republic has been alerted by our attorney that we will be fining them per the contract standards that says they need to tag and not collect these barrels. So it's a two-step process. We're educating the residents, but we're also holding our hauler responsible for the letter of the contract.
Do you have a hotline set up?
Oh, yeah.
That's Elliot's.
My, my next question is, when homes are being built in Eastline Meadow, when do they actually become eligible for trash pickup? Would it be based on an occupancy permit?
Don't know if it stands to that.
It would make sense.
That would be logical.
I imagine if there's a barrel outside of the house.
I mean, that is another issue, that there are homes that are being built, and there's trash barrels out in front of the homes. And if you were to talk to the owner of the home or the builder, they're currently paying taxes, so they would say, are we eligible or aren't we? So maybe it's a question we should answer, but it could be as simple as based on a, you know, an occupancy permit from the building inspector.
Yeah, that's a very logical response.
That's a good question.
I wouldn't realize people would put trash out.
We could put that in the welcome.
Trash is very technical.
Yes.
Oh, it is so much more than you.
So you got, you can get an answer now at some point.
I think we can decide that. I think your suggestion that when the CO is issued makes logical sense.
But it, but at this point, if Republic sees a trash barrel out in front of a house, they wouldn't know whether a CO is issued or not.
Yeah, that's true.
They pretty much just pick it up, I think.
Yeah, and I'm not saying that it should be when a CO is offered. I mean, a lot of people are paying a lot of taxes on these properties.
Yeah.
So if they're paying taxes, and they're abiding by the law, then, then so be it.
Hard-pressed to argue it.
It's something we need to, it's something that I think we need to figure out.
Okay. You could work with the department that.
Is this their?
Yeah, recessor's office, yep.
Do you have a sense at all in what, in talking with the, the drivers, if as a result of three months of being vigilant with education, that they see some trends toward compliance?
I think that, right now, we have two drivers in our town, and one is being transferred to another area in their company. So, one has, they, they don't really report back to us personally, they report back to the hauler supervisor.
Understood, yeah.
It's hard to say, because they, they have about a thousand houses to pick up a day, so they're probably not paying attention to that kind of thing. I, I definitely do notice.
Yeah, we haven't heard anything.
Right. But I definitely do notice the houses that I tagged have made changes.
Okay.
And if you, if you drive around, I know there were some of the small businesses that they had trash out, and they left it out week after week, to your concern. And after we've notified them, it's not there anymore. There's a house on Shaker Road that has huge amounts of white trash bags, and they've now turned to green. So, we're getting there. It's, it's.
And there's no limit on the green, right?
Correct.
No, right?
No, because of paying for that.
Yeah. The only, the only point to make with the green is that we won't see our tonnage go down. So we can then, maybe at the end of the next fiscal year, see the percentage of sale increase of our green bags, and try to compare it to the tonnage, to see if the green bag sales have gone up, and see if the overall tonnage has gone down in comparison to the green sales. But it will, hard to see in the very brief data that that is happening.
Right.
Who, who, how does, how do the stores get the green bags? A few weeks ago, I went to one of our local grocery stores, they did not have any. I went to Rockies, they did not have any.
Right. We heard that. Way Zero did, is located in North Carolina, so the hurricane did affect them. So my guess is, we had a hard time reaching them. My guess is it was just a supply issue because of that.
Just because of the hurricane?
Correct.
Okay, so that was a one-time thing?
Right. And they, the actual stores have their, they either call when they need it, or they have a.
Auto.
Yeah, like an auto refill.
So it could be that that store just didn't notice they were out or something. But, so that's why we decided internally to have the bags. So if there were every, any gap with our retailers, that residents would still have access.
Is it possible, and Mike pointed out something that even, I, if you look at the barrels, you have no, no idea how many gallons there, because of the height or the dimension of the barrel. Is it possible to put out a few thirty-five gallon barrels, like at the Council on Asian and other places, as a sample, to let people know what it looks like?
We could, I think the grant funding would allow us to buy a few, for example.
Probably.
It's just an idea, because I, well, Denise knows in the last meeting, when she first brought this up, I asked her questions, what are the blue tags? Because I've been getting asked that question by a number of people that, as I'm around town. And I don't know. I say, I don't know what you're talking about.
It's going to, Republic is using it.
Which is good.
Yeah.
But it's, it sounds like it's getting their attention. But to look at a barrel and say, it's thirty-five, because I don't know how they're identified and how they're marked.
The trash haulers, they do that every day.
Yeah, they know.
I'm sure they can look really quickly and know what's, what size it is. You know, for us, it's good to educate our residents, it's another step of education. But in terms of the haulers knowing, I think they can look pretty fast and identify them.
And the other thing is, when I drove around at first, I didn't know unless, unless it had a big sticker that they had left, the resident had left on it. However, then I would look on the top, and it's kind of like engraved into the plastic, the sizes. So.
Or on the bottom.
Right. So you can see it if you actually look for it.
Yeah, I don't think a lot of people take the time to flip them over and look.
They're all excited.
It looks good enough.
Right.
So it's, it's fair to say, I mean, in Eastline Meadow, and I haven't driven around through neighborhood and neighborhood like you guys have, but all our trash is being manually picked up. In other words, the drivers are exiting the vehicle.
Correct.
And picking them up. So some of these containers that are huge, unless that truck was equipped for, with forks on the front of it to pick it up.
Right.
Then we're all going to have to comply with that barrel that's a standard item at some point in time, which is going to be here sooner than later.
Right. And taking their bigger barrels and putting those green tags on them, like you said, the, the big sticker, that's, that's a great way for them to, they don't have to throw away their big barrel.
Right.
They can get a new, smaller one and use that for all the recycling they're going to do.
And the stickers catch your attention, because way back when Republic started, I got a naughty sticker for not putting my trash out by seven in the morning. So I actually got a letter that was stuck, it was blue, and it was stuck to the side of my trash can.
Okay, raise your hands if you've gotten one of those stickers.
So, any other questions?
Sounds very comprehensive and very thorough, your research and your help with your intern has yielded some good results, and the education program is just, it's stepping in the right direction. It's great work.
Thank you. And if you get a lot of complaints, feel free to send them to our department. We're happy to talk with anybody who might be contacting you with their displeasure.
Yeah, and I don't mean to, you know, but all you do is tell them, our contract with the trash company is, they pick up, except this, thirty-five gallons, and then whatever. If you exceed that, they can't pick it up. So it's not the town's fault.
It's not.
It's not the trash company's fault, it's a contract.
Right.
All right. Thanks, guys.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
The point of order, Brownstone Gardens, expanded its trash pads. We completed them yesterday to accommodate single-stream recycling.
Oh.
There you go.
Here the man trips.
Okay, our next item under new business is the request for a petition to amend zoning bylaws for a new mixed-use district from Industrial Gardens Park for parcel eighteen dash thirty-eight dash zero, otherwise known as three hundred and thirty Chestnut Street. Attorney Mantlefsky.
Good evening, how are you?
Good evening.
Good, how are you?
I'm well, thank you. So yes, we're here. I represent M&amp;A Long Meadow LLC, owners of three thirty Chestnut Street in Eastlong Meadow. We have, you know, come back for another hopeful mixed-use proposal from the town. We've had conversations with the town planner, and, you know, we think that she's ready, you know, to start kind of taking this on, and she's gotten her bearings. And so, we would like to petition the town to have the town come up with and draft a new mixed-use proposal for consideration. So we're asking that the council today refer that, our petition for that request for the mixed-use to go to the planning board.
Is there any discussion?
I just had a couple of comments on it.
Absolutely.
You just, you heard the previous, not the immediate previous speaker, but Chris Carr. And my thoughts are, is, you know, we're not a one-size-fits-all. I'll go, even go to the trash analogy, not one-size-fits-all. And I think as we look at projects, there's one thing about mixed-use. There was a mixed-use proposal years ago where the coffee roaster is on Maple Court and so forth. A smaller project. Your project, if it's anything like the previous one, is substantively larger. And I think what I would ask the planning board, if they're looking into this, is to try to look at the bylaw as, in terms of its impact. So if they want a mixed-use smaller, twenty units, ten units, fifteen, that's one thing. But a mixed-use a hundred units, two hundred, three hundred, five hundred, you know, a big project, that they, that they find strategies to make sure that it doesn't have a negative impact on Eastlong Meadow and its school systems, and to make it 40B neutral, and to come up with ways. Because even your company, when they did the Morris Plains project, they, they recognized the impact they had on Morris Plains. And then, they went in with another two hundred units, asking the state to come in to create more affordable housing. So let's be proactive, and let's look at a bylaw to consider. I'm not saying it'll pass one way or the other, but I'm saying we, we should look at the impact as it impacts Chapter 40B and the town's affordable housing.
Absolutely. And I think that the, the town planner, you know, is definitely cognizant of the town's needs with respect to affordable housing. And I, my client is aware, as we've had discussions previously regarding that issue. And, you know, I think my client is really, has a desire to work with the town with respect to that, and any needs that the town has. And they really want to see what the town exactly wants with respect to this potential new zone, and this potential, a potential mixed-use zone.
I think, I think a lot of the strategy is to make sure we don't relive the experience you guys had with Morris Plains, that we don't have a situation where we become adversarial, that we look at something.
Absolutely.
That's positive for the town. And being mindful, you heard Chris Carr speaking, that there's a big backlog of elder, elder affordable housing. And that obviously doesn't create a negative impact to Eastlong Meadow, because, whereas our schools, you were present at a meeting, I don't know if you were, or Frank, where I asked the.
I think I was present at all.
You were, no, no, not in some committee meeting, one of these meetings, where we talked, we asked Gordon, they said, how many more kids can our school system, can our, can our high school handle? And it wasn't that much more.
Mm-hmm.
So if we have a project, so it's one thing to talk about mixed-use, and the other thing is, what is the mix? Is it a very weak mix with ten percent versus ninety? Or is it similar to what we're seeing down, the new projects that we're seeing in Eastfield Mall, and perhaps Holyoke Mall, where we have a higher amount of business and a, and a more proportionate amount of housing? So I think we really need to think out of the big box and look at strategies, not so much from the developer point of view, but collaboratively with the town's point of view, to make sure that this beautiful project that you guys want to create isn't going to put our school systems in, in harm's way, isn't going to put us in a situation where we're in gross violation of 40B. So that's just my thoughts.
Absolutely.
Yeah, I, I would echo Don's thoughts as well. In addition to, one of the sticklers that I perceived in those meetings that we attended was that they were not willing to identify what the mix was. When I asked the question of how many apartments, how many condos, how many townhouses, there was no answer. So, to, to work with the town, we would need to know what that mix would be.
I think the town planner, you know, definitely is going to have a sense. She's been a lot of different places and has done mixed-use previously. She know, I think, she knows what's going to work, and that's why we can't wait to see, you know, what the planning board and the town planner has for us, and what type of, we can see exactly what they think that the town needs and wants. You know, and I think during those discussions, it was, you know, it came back to, this isn't going to be necessarily project-specific. At that point in time, I think we were just all about, it was, everything was about getting the new zone done that can be applicable to the town in general, and not just our, our project. So we're, we are definitely ready to see what the town thinks and what they want with respect to their needs, with respect to the total number of housing, what they, what their max is, what their, what their low range is, and what they want for percentages as for the mixed-use, as to commercial and residential. So again, you know, I, I think that Ms. Brothers, the town planner, is ready to take that on now.